I'd like to call the public hearing meeting to order.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, I come before you with the regulated public hearing for the 1028 initial appropriations for the next phase of our project. I really wish you had your statement.
Yes. This evening's public hearing is called the 1028 hearing. A hearing of this type is a legal requirement prior to a public school corporation moving forward to approve the issuance of bonds. This process relates to the potential financing of various renovation and improvement projects, particularly renovations, additions, and improvements at all eighteen classroom buildings, including additional classrooms at Utica Elementary School, plus the purchase of buses and technology, and general improvements at Court and Corridor Education Center, the Administration Building, Feather Center, Auxiliary Services Center, Transportation Center, and Witten Auto Center. Each building individually a project, collectively the projects. The School Board encourages comments and questions related to these projects by the citizens of Greater Clark County. If you desire to comment when I open the public hearing for comments, you should raise your hand, and when I recognize you, come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for your presentation. You will be notified when you have a minute left for your presentation to a conclusion. For the sake of time, if a prior speaker has made a comment that you are going to make, it is sufficient to say, "I agree with so-and-so," rather than repeating the comment as in whole. At this time, I'm opening the public hearing portion of this meeting, and I ask anyone interested in making comments, please raise their hands.
Having that, Madam President, I would make a respectful request that the board trustees make a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
May I have a motion, Board?
Madam President, I move your adjournment.
Second.
Thank you. This public hearing meeting is adjourned. Oh, okay. All in favor of adjourned this public hearing meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing meeting is adjourned. Now I'd like to call the next public hearing, request for additional appropriations meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight is the public hearing for the additional appropriations. Let me just clarify the difference between the additional appropriations that you just heard from the public hearing for the 1028 project versus the 2020 budget additional appropriation request. This particular hearing is to have comments on the 2020 additional appropriation request that you covered on September 1st with an additional $4 million in education fund, $1.3 million in operations fund, $433,025 in debt service, $633,063
The School Board encourages comments and questions related to these appropriations by the citizens of Greater Clark County. If you desire a comment when I open the public hearing for comments, you should raise your hand, and when I recognize you, come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes for your presentation, and you'll be notified when you have about a minute left for your presentation to a conclusion. For the sake of time, if a prior speaker has made a comment that you're going to make, it's sufficient to say, "I agree with so-and-so," rather than repeating the comment in whole. At this time, I'm opening the public hearing portion of this meeting, and ask those interested in making comments, please raise your hand.
And, Madam President, respectfully request the board to make a motion to conclude this public hearing.
May I have a motion, Board? Go for it.
Madam President, do you think we can conclude?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of concluding the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This public hearing is adjourned. I'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Note that all board members are present, and I'd like you to stand and pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I'd like to start with approval of the agenda. Board, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Agenda is approved. No further comments on agenda items. Our next item is the consent agenda.
Board, may I have a motion, please? Madam President, we approve the sport, or approve the agenda as, the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Any questions or comments on items in the consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Next, we have gifts to buildings.
We had one gift to the league this month, Union Washington Elementary School, their progress made in awards, an amount of $509.37. We use the principal's expression. I move that we accept this gift of building as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Walton. Any questions or comments? All of the favor of approving the gifts to buildings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Gifts to buildings are approved. Our first action item is the semester two calendar.
Yes, thanks, Board. Good to see all of you again tonight. First, before I make the recommendation, I want to sort of take you back, you know, about six months to where we've been and how we got here today. If you remember, obviously, the COVID experience and what happened last spring and the summer caused us to take a hard look at the first semester calendar. You know, and when we looked at that first semester calendar, we tried to create a calendar that, you know, took care of the worst-case scenario. I think we're at a point now where we've seen the data, we've seen how so far this school year's flowed, that we haven't hit that worst-case scenario. You know, so as we've gone through this first semester, you know, all along, we told our community that we would make a decision by December 1st for the second semester. You know, and we have tried to get as much feedback as we possibly can from parents, from students, or from staff, you know, all of our stakeholders to figure out what we need to do next while trying to balance the needs of all of our stakeholders, which in this situation is very difficult because, you know, obviously, the parents have a need, you know, the teachers have a need, students have needs in terms of their education academics, you know, and so we feel like this calendar is a very good compromise, you know, moving into the second semester. What we heard the most is that a lot of teachers and parents did not like the whole week, e-learning weeks off because it created childcare problems, it created, you know, who's teaching my child at home problem. Also, the feedback from teachers was that they didn't like it. You know, there were some that did, some that didn't. I would say the majority of the teachers did not like the whole weeks, but they still gave us feedback, as teachers did, that they appreciated having some of those e-learning days built in so that they could get caught up with their virtual learners, so that, you know, we appreciate it because we can do some professional development with our teachers in terms of the virtual learning piece. So, you know, this calendar we are presenting to you tonight, if you go back and look at what the board approved in October of 2019, is not different than that, except for the addition of seven e-learning days.
All of those are additions?
Yep. There's seven additional e-learning days, which will be on every other Friday, and that's the only change from the calendar all of you approved back in October of 2019. The start date is the same, January 4th. The end date is the same. For students, it's May 27th. For teachers, it's May 28th. The graduation dates are the same. Spring break is the same, and we will not do e-learning over spring break. The e-learning days will be asynchronous, not synchronous, you know, which frees up, you know, it gives us a little more flexibility in terms of what we do with our teachers and students on those days. So, we feel good about the calendar we're presenting. We feel like we've gotten a whole lot of feedback, because what I will tell you, you know, as we started this school year, every time we had an e-learning day or an e-learning week, we got a tremendous amount of feedback from parents, staff, and students, both positive and negative, you know, and so we tried to create a calendar that balanced out all of that feedback that we got. We feel good about this. So, you know, I would recommend that the board approve this calendar for semester two, and we set these dates, knowing that obviously, you know, the Health Department, Dr. Yezel, the state, could force us to shut schools down for a week or two at a time if our positivity rates continue to climb like they have been. So, and that was another issue I just want to bring up, that, you know, some of our staff wanted those whole week breaks. One of the concerns that we had as a cabinet was that if we go ahead and set those whole week breaks, and maybe it's the end of a month, but two weeks before we get to there, Dr. Yezel comes in and says, "Hey, your positivity rates in your district are going way up. We need to, we need Greater Clark to shut down for two weeks." Well, we've already set the calendar for that whole week at the end of the month, and now our kids are going to be out three weeks instead of just two weeks. You know, and so that worried us too, that if we do those whole weeks, it could put us in a situation where our kids could be out for quite a while if positivity rates go up, you know, and Dr. Yezel, the Health Department of State, comes in, starts shutting schools down for two weeks at a time, which is a very real possibility, you know, because of the rates, you know, and what's going on. So, I respectfully submit this to the board, you know, for your approval.
Thank you.
Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we approve the semester two of 2020-2021 calendar as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Walton. Questions or comments? Dr. Clayton?
I have a question. I have a comment. I'm not really too good with calendars. Many of you know that. I generally vote no for one reason or another. I think, first of all, administration, teachers, principals, everyone that participated in this process, even from the calendar, we normally just approve one calendar per year, but due to COVID-19 crisis, we've had to make some adjustments. I have had some concerns from parents that before, they have no prior information about this. Now, I have the website, and I know that we're improving that, that hopefully next year, we can give parents and the manager notice before it draws our attention. I am going to vote no tonight on the calendar, not because it's not any good. I'm going to vote because I look at those two weeks in March, and May, a week off is good. I know that the teachers have been struggling a lot this year, but this is not the first year for the two weeks. I know we're not doing summer school at that point, so my rationale is that take away a week and get the kids out for summer, and for those students that are graduating, going on to vocational school or colleges, that they can have extra time to work to make money. So, that's my vote tonight, but I do appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Gilke.
And this shouldn't be a surprise. I've been sent out emails. I also have been getting some emails from parents who did not have an opportunity to view the calendar because it wasn't posted on Board Docs. That being said, that means that there's also teachers who haven't had a chance to view it, parent educators who haven't had a chance to view it, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, like, there's a whole lot of people who haven't had a chance to view it, and then provide us with any concerns or feedback that they might have had relative to the schedule. For the sake of transparency, I can't vote to say yes on this tonight either. Just feel like we need to be more transparent. We need to give people an opportunity to see things ahead of time, and then give us feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Gilke. Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple comments. I think that, given the magnitude of content that has run through the cabinet, that has run through the board, I understand the concern about, you know, we want to be as transparent as we can. This has never been something that we have voted on anyway. I think when it comes out and follows the whole year thing, I understand the opinion, I really do. I have to, the comments I had, I've had five, and three of them were just about, it's spring break, it's going to be two weeks. We need to know as soon as possible because we're trying to plan the trip, so I get that. Two of them were, we want to see it because of our businesses and that sort of thing. I think the question there is, hey, look, I need daycare, I need childcare, I need that sort of thing. So, and I get that too. I think the consistency of this calendar will really should take care of that. And finally, one of the wisest men in the world has ever known, my father told me not to scream until we're hurt. I think some people that are screaming before we're really hurt at this point, and again, I apologize that we can't get everything out and make it all transparent, but it's like when I had a classroom and I had my own thermostat, and that's been a long, long time ago. But every kid in there was at a different temperature. So, we've really set ourselves up somewhat to get a lot of different temperatures, and I think we're doing that, and I want to thank the cabinet, everybody, for putting this together, and for that reason, I'm going to vote yes tonight.
Well, I will tell you, the typical procedure when we do calendars is, you know, we create a calendar in-house, we discuss that calendar with the association, then we bring it to the board. We typically do not survey parents. You know, the only time we've ever surveyed parents in the 16 years I've been in this district, I believe it's been 16 years, is when we went to a balanced calendar. You know, when we just do a normal yearly calendar, we don't put out a survey, you know, to all our parents. You know, if that's something the board would like to see us do in the future, you know, we can look at that, but it's not something we've done the past 16 years I've been in this district. You know, and we discussed this calendar. Well, part of the reason we didn't put it open to Board Docs yet because there were a few things we had to clarify with the association today, not pertaining to really the dates and days and all that, it pertained more to making sure the association, the teachers knew that we were going to do asynchronous, and the spring break was going to be a real break. It wasn't going to be e-learning, just making sure those things were clarified. So, you know, I do understand the concern, you know, but we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can.
I want to thank the cabinet, for all the moments I know this, was that, you know, some people say on, you know, the superintendent, that it really is a team of people, and I appreciate you guys getting it out a month and a half before, you know, you've looked at the data, you've looked at it, you said December 1st, and here we are, October, I guess it's a month before. I don't know what date it is. Twenty, you have to tell me that on the reservation. I don't know, excuse, but we're a whole month at least. That's another month that parents have to plan and everything, and I know that people really appreciate those spring breaks and everything, so I just want to thank the cabinet for their hard work.
Well, I will tell you, I know you guys have gotten some feedback today and the last few days. I mean, we've been getting feedback for the last two weeks, emails, phone calls up here from parents asking the same question that Mr. Dr. Walton just brought up. When are you setting the calendar? I need to turn in vacation days. I need to know. You can't drag this out any longer. So, you know, it's a difficult balance, you know, no matter what decision we make, some people are going to be happy and some are not, you know. So, I think, you know, when you look at this calendar, it's a good calendar for the second semester.
I have a question. I know, as Ms. Gilke pointed out, there's been discussion back and forth, and a lot of emails went around, too. I've heard, I've heard some discussion that some of the teachers, I was thinking specifically primary teachers were more interested in going ahead and maintaining a calendar as you have it drawn now, and perhaps secondary teachers were more interested in continuing what we already established or something similar to it. And since you did have a meeting with the association this afternoon, what was, what was your take on the situation there?
Well, I think the same concern. There's still that same concern with some secondary teachers would like to see that whole week, you know, like a three in, one week e-learning out. Then you have elementary teachers that feel the opposite. They want more continuity and consistency, and the other, every other front is the model they want, because it's very hard to have elementary kids home for a week and then bring them back after a week of e-learning and get them started again. You know, and so it's been that same feedback all along since we've discussed this, you know, during corporation discussion, and what we've heard from other teachers that maybe aren't in corporation discussion, but they're giving us feedback, and also the parents, that, so striking a balance, you know, and at one point, you know, in the September corporation discussion, we even discussed, do we have a different model for the elementary kids versus the secondary kids, you know, and the feedback we got on that from association members and also other teachers is, you know, there was an equity problem in that, you know, a fairness problem, that, you know, you would have elementary teachers in the building 100% of the time while secondary teachers would be doing e-learning weeks at a time, and we were afraid that that would divide our faculty, you know, and that's the last thing we want to do, is pit our elementary teachers against our secondary teachers. And some in the association corporation discussion thought that same way. So, you know, we've talked about this, you know, a lot, you know, and gone through the details a great deal.
I just have one comment. No matter what calendar we put out there, all of our publics realize, and parents realize that it's true. It could change, probably will change.
Hopefully not.
Well, I don't believe it. It probably will. So, you know, I just don't want, I want them to be aware of the fact that it's not written in stone, it can be changed due to our health department or whatever.
Yeah, and like I said, the first semester calendar that we developed was worst-case scenario of what we could run into, but when, now that we've been, you know, well over halfway through this first semester, and you look at the data, you know, our data's good, you know, and we feel like we can, even though, you know, you're hearing a lot of things out there in terms of positivity rates, you know, when you look at our data, it's still pretty good, pretty solid. So, we feel like we can reduce the number of e-learning days that we need in the second semester. This semester, we had 26 e-learning days built into this first semester. Ten of those were fall break, so really 16. Second semester, what, nine? You know, so they're still there, and there's some balance there. You know, that's why I say we feel good about having that balance right there.
All right. Can I call for a vote now? All right. All those in favor of the second semester calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. Next, we have the Dewey-Hensley consultancy contract, Leadership Academy work in I D O E targeted schools. Dr. Perkins?
Good evening, Board. As we strive to build a culture of achievement and be done unprecedented times, we've had to make some adjustments, like we have in all other facets of our operations. So, this year, we have developed a leadership academy that has a branch specifically to support our four Indian Department of Education targeted schools within the district. It will have components aimed to support systems which increase achievement, a professional culture of collaboration, and informed decision-making. The overarching goal is leveraging leadership to change the trajectories of children's lives and ultimately improve achievement. The Leadership Academy will focus upon the following initiatives. A district delivery planning method, and we filter everything through our academic team. This institute model of professional learning works in a practical and pragmatic way to help the district leadership, school leadership, and teacher leadership leverage the best practices and systems to achieve the best results academically, socially, emotionally, and in terms of an effective culture. We also have utilized an approach with a consultancy team. We started this work last spring, and right when we were ready to really launch it and implement the work that came out of our data collection, of course, COVID struck and we shut down. So, we are hoping to continue this work on into the school year, and really we're not ready to launch it until now, with all of the logistical pieces we had to focus on in the first quarter. So, the consultancy team, in order to be highly effective, the district leaders, school-level leaders, and teachers must be able to communicate openly in problem-solving teams. Just like a medical professional team, legal professionals, and scientists, they have to be able to diagnose problems and seek counsel with each other on how to solve these problems. Consultancy teams use an inside-out collaboration model, which asks school leaders to diagnose a problem and seek help from colleagues from within the building and also within the district community. This proposal offers at least three consultancy team visits at three different schools designated by the district. Three of our D O E targeted schools will continue the work that was launched in 2019, and they will specifically focus on school improvement efforts in the area of special education, which is why they have targeted school. We are also bringing CMS on this year. Last year, the principal was new to the building. He wanted her to have some time to get acclimated, and we will start with a small focus this semester with a special education team, and then we will branch that out as needed. The table below outlines the scope of work that will be implemented for the purpose of enhancing professional practice and the overall student achievement. It will continue throughout the remainder of the year. The cost of the Leadership Academy for consultancy work is $13,500. Ms. Gilke has reviewed the contract for accuracy, and all expenses will be paid out of our federal Title IV grants that must be used to support professional development.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we approve the Dewey-Hensley consultancy contract.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. It sounds really good, that's a comment. Is part of this Leadership Academy work having anything to do with diversity, and I mean the larger definition of diversity in dealing with situations that involve as building leaders?
Well, it's all driven through data. So, obviously, you know, as we aggregate, disaggregate the data, and we look at different subgroups and the areas of need, it absolutely does, you know, action steps, and we look at gaps in our goals, and certainly, it does include that as well. And one of the subgroups specifically is the special education group, so yes.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the Dewey-Hensley consultancy contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, contract is approved. Next, we have the Child Development Associate Evaluation Rubric.
Yes. This year, we added a new position in our preschool programming, and that was the Child Development Associate, Associate Position, which required us to add an evaluation rubric. The evaluation rubric was developed by Brooke Lannan and Emmy Borogan. Many templates were considered and reviewed in the developmental process of this. The chosen rubric submitted for approval aligns with the state-recommended path to quality standards, which we are required to
which we are required to adhere to for our preschool programs, as well as the Greater Park County Schools' employee expectations. This rubric will be added to the standard for success digital evaluation sites upon approval. And Greater Park County Schools currently has seven employees classified as C D As, and all seven of these employees will be evaluated with this particular rubric.
Board, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the C D A evaluation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Buckwalter. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor of approving the Child Development Associate Evaluation Rubric, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the rubric is approved. Next, we have the Special Olympics Indiana Agreement.
Yes, Board, we are so excited about this opportunity. Greater Park County Schools has been given a chance to participate in the Young Champions Program. It is supported through the Special Olympics of Indiana and is 100% free of charge to participate for our students and for us. The program supports inclusive practices while encouraging increased physical activity for students in grades P through eight. The program offers free resources and equipment and stipends to participate in the buildings. The stipends will be used to purchase additional equipment as well as T-shirts for all students who participate. This is a great opportunity for our students with special needs who may not be inclined to participate in extracurricular activities otherwise. During the 2021 school year, students in the preschool program will participate in this program, and then we plan to extend that to other grade levels in future years. Brooke Lannan and Emmy Lorgan will be the point persons for Greater Park County Schools.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the Special Olympics Indiana Agreement as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Any questions or comments on this item?
Is there a competition involved here or just?
Um, they do have some competitions. I am not certain at the preschool level. I know I've seen it in other districts as, as children advance, they do hold them. And I have also seen it where students who are not identified as special education get heavily involved to support these programs and the events that they hold. And I think it's, it's not only a great opportunity for our special education students, but also for all of our students to help enhance their appreciation of differences in others.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the 2021 Special Olympics Indiana Agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That agreement is approved. Next, we have the 1028 hearing resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. In your packet, it was delivered to you. You've seen these documents because you've approved them previously at preliminary determination. You will have a 1028 resolution defining the project of being 22.1 million. A resolution authorizing the execution of amendment to the lease agreement. Resolution authorizing the building court to engage in steps in issuing the bonds. And the additional appropriation resolution, which I have thoroughly explained what that purpose is for this borrowing and allows us to authorize to spend the bond money. And for your convenience, we do have excerpts of meetings minutes to this meeting that we're able to have available to you because we will progress aggressively to get started on this process. I respectfully recommend to the board to approve these resolutions as presented.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we approve the 1028 hearing resolutions. I'm not going to spell all my letters, so we'll summarize that, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Clayton, thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Uh, any questions or comments on these resolutions?
I'd just like to say, thank you CFO, we're doing a wonderful job on this.
It's all right.
Well, I can do one or maybe I'll get off.
All right. All those in favor of approving the 1028 hearing resolutions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And those resolutions are approved. Next, we have the Tax Anticipation Warrants.
Thank you, Madam President. In your work packet, we've attached the resolution for obtaining a tax anticipation warrant for Greater Park County Schools. As indicated in the budget presentation in September, we would need to obtain these, what I've known as D W, for cash level purposes. The district will receive bids from financial institutions that will mature on December 31st, 2021, and the funds will be obtained July 4th, 2021. This need is exacerbated, exacerbated by having to fund the first payroll of the year and not having sufficient cash flow appearances. And we have discussed those facts to an extent. We are committed to move away from borrowing until tax anticipation warrants are needed. We are needing them now, but it's in the event that we do not receive property tax collection, and we have indications that that would happen. So our future goal, and it may take us a little while to do that, to move away from that and minimize those costs to our taxpayers. So I respectfully recommend to the board to approve the Tax Anticipation Warrant Resolutions presented to you tonight.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the Tax Anticipation Warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Uh, any questions or comments? The only thing I, I have a question. You said, uh, July 4th, and this is January 4th?
I mean, I'm sorry, it's January.
Okay, that's right, yes. As long as this is correct.
January 4th, you know, because that fell on holiday, the original. We had to, could move it into prior, prior, the 27th of February, but more over because of the beginning of January, we intend to tie it in the year that we have to have that cash flow.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the Tax Anticipation Warrants, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and those ones are approved. Next, we have the 2021 Budget Adoption.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this is the last leg of your journey for the 2021 budget, not that I will never stop talking about it. There are four resolutions that are required that I briefly go over, and does need to go into a lot of detail because I have done that. But I do have a comment about some good news for this board at the end. We're not, we're bad news, now we're bringing some good news. First thing is the bus replacement plan. Your report is still provide, you're looking at your buses and contract drivers to the D L G F. We've got a projects plan, which mainly handled by our debt borrowing. But we do anticipate certain things that we want, if we can, we can try to accomplish that, it's a never-evolving document. A resolution to establish transfers funding from education to operations. All revenue received from the state goes into education. Remember, we are going to transfer 9.5 million dollars to operations. I showed how that was always handled in the former general fund, and now we need to commit those funds over to operations. This resolution will be different than how you handled it in the past. It's coming to you at this time to say that no more than 9.5 million dollars we transferred, the D L G F will be very aware of that. Your state work accounts will thought of that. If you come in less because we don't have cash, then I'll be able to justify it. And I will be transferring at least once every six months. So I don't have to bring to you, it's not required for me to bring to you resolutions every time I do need cash. If I have to, back in the board, to move more than 9.5 million, then that comes in the outside of the traditional resolution time. So that's why it's handled this way. So that way, you know, when that special resolution goes through, there's something special you have to pay attention to, but beyond the 9.5. Of course, you'll know that before I come to you. And the final one is the actual adoption of your appropriation, your tax levy, and your tax rate. Now, I advertise high, right? So that, that's what you normally do in the newspaper. So that way, it gives us a chance that when the D L G F awards our budget in a 17-2 notice, that we will commit to making it to a dollar 10. Here is fantastic news. Our property values here in Greater Park County School District has increased by 8.1%. That is still what it was last year. That is due to the little thing that I put into your mind to think about, maybe a little bit different. Those are the items that make us attractive. Our enrollment has gone up by 150 kids, did we say, or 160?
160.
160 kids. So those are the things that are pointing at, right? And that will be most helpful. Still doesn't mean we don't tighten our belts, but what that does for you in this five-year plan, because we, our buildings need attention, it gives you an opportunity to have that borrowing power. We will be going through a standard and force rating. We need to increase our rate. These two items right here will capture the tension of the standard and force. You get better bidders on your bond. Your bondholders will want to serve Greater Park County in their mission. So I'll be spending about an hour on the phone with Matt Schumacher, who will listen to me talk for an hour. And we will explain my budget philosophy, my experience, my experience with standards of course, and my experience with borrowing projects. And so with these items, we should be at really good benchmark, we're confident in that. And so Matt is here, if you have any questions, he's gone through those projections for you. And when he talked about the $8 million payment that was in the debt, what this does is it allows you to get a good payment for your first year and level off your payments for the rest, that gives you more room to do your borrowing, to plan your year three from our demographic study that'll be coming in and our building assessment. This is fantastic news for this board. So further ado, no further ado, I strongly recommend that this board proudly approves these four resolutions tonight for making the 2021 budget.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the 2021 budget adoption resolution as submitted.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Buckwalter, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clayton. Any questions or comments on this?
I have a question, and it's not directly related, but it's really into something you said. Our enrollment's up 150 students. And I know there are other corporations that are, it's down. Now, I either missed it or I heard it and forgot. Is our, is the governor going to hold us at what we were, or do we get a benefit for 150 more students?
We will get the benefit. The regulation is, is that they would hold any school district at their last count date unless you had an increase, and there we are. So.
Thank you.
What, what is our S and P rating right now?
I don't know what that rate is, so, you know, I'm going to try to get us an eight plus. I do remember that.
It's A minus.
Oh, yeah, so we're going to, I don't know.
What was it again?
Eight minus. We want to get that to eight plus. Those two factors, honestly, I mean, yeah, I have, you know, some experience, but those two other factors are, are getting better with the increase in enrollment and our increase in subs.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the 2021 budget adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The budget adoption is approved.
Congratulations.
Next, we have resolutions for additional appropriations for education, operations, debt service, and pension debt funds for budget year 2020.
Thank you, Madam President. I recommend to the board to approve the four resolutions I have talked about three times for the 1.4.
And you have. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move that we approve the additional appropriation resolutions for education, operations, debt service, and pension debt fund for budget year 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Buckwalter. Any questions or comments? When you need to talk. All those in favor of approving the resolution for additional appropriations for budget year 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item eight is approved. Next, we have the Progressive Design Build, Design Criteria and Developer Services Agreement with Lancer Plus B B LLC.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, all. Until at this point, you've been approving to borrow money, now I'm going to ask you to print some. So what you have here are the Design Criteria Developer Agreement with Lancer Plus B B. As you're aware, Lancer Plus B B is also the firm that is doing our facility study. The agreement is for $50,000 plus expenses, and it will comply with Indiana Code 5-30 for a design-built public works project. The scope of work in the agreement is going to include new locker rooms at Jefferson High School and Charleston High School, and a classroom addition at Union Elementary School. So I respectfully request that you approve the Design Criteria Developer Agreement with Lancer Plus B B.
Thank you, Dr. Shane. Board, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the Lancer B B D C E contract.
Okay, Dr. Clayton, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Uh, any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of approving the Progressive Design Build, Design Criteria and Developer Services Agreement with Lancer Plus B B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Is that a plus sign or a minus?
It's a plus.
I know this because I was on my old partner's, I mean, it's Lancer plus.
No, no, I know. I know it's a plus sign, but I didn't know it was pronounced plus. It was Nance. I mean, Lancer Plus B B.
We'll go with that. That item is approved. Next, we have the approval of the E S G Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract.
Okay, thank you. This process has been very, very long in, in scope, to say the least. I bring to you tonight something that I believe will optimize all of our learning environments, at least phase one, there's more work to be done. But certainly, I, I bring this to you knowing that we've had a board committee that's put in tireless amounts of time, site reviews, a lot of research. Mr. Buckwalter was on that, Mrs. Patrick and Mr. Hawkins, along with members of cabinet. So what we're bringing, bringing to you tonight is the Phase One Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract. And for those who are watching or listening and wondering that guaranteed energy savings is very important. Because that is essentially what we are doing. We are, we are going to be entering into an agreement that's going to cost us $9,036,000. But over the course of the 15 years of guaranteed energy savings, as I played out there, the district will save $10,527,510, and that's guaranteed for the life of that contract. The contract has been discussed, revised, and reviewed by legal counsel, the chief financial officer, Mrs. Huber, myself, Superintendent Lawton, and as I mentioned, our school board committee. So I, I'm excited about this project. I'm excited for what it's going to allow all of our staff and our students over the next year, year and a half of implementation and actual brick and mortar and improvements and renovations. And I bring to you, asking for approval of this guaranteed energy savings contract tonight.
Thank you. Board, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the Guaranteed Energy Saving Performance Contract in Greater Park County Schools and Energy Systems Group LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Buckwalter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question. I've had two parents call me and ask me the cause of the COVID and the conditions of our gear and our buildings that are concerned. And I told them that this that we're proving tonight will improve that, the air quality. Is that, that are?
No, you're right.
Okay. And is there, is there something better?
Well, I don't know if this is cutting edge, but it's certainly bleeding edge. You know, I think that's the safer place to be in my mind, and there's a lot of air infiltration that comes from outside. You have to bring the outside air. So there's a lot of upgrades that are going to be involved in this. We're going to be using ultraviolet ionization to screen out for a lot of the viruses included, and that would be COVID, flu, all of the common colds, bacterias, and things. So yes, you weren't inaccurate in telling that parent that this would bring and help optimize some of those learning environments, in addition to the energy savings that we're going to see with the lighting upgrades and things that we're going to be embarking on.
Thank you.
A lot of that air purification stuff too was, had been forced through the, you know, Boeing and those people when COVID came out to try to get people back in airplanes. So it's been tested and run through, and I think they had a ninety-nine percent infection in a room over the course of an hour. You know, it was like one percent or something COVID. It was very, very, very efficient. So the ionizers are not, too, are built of ultrasonic filters, but they do have to be cleaned. So there's a lot to that in terms of the energy saving thing. I really, that meant a lot to me. You're not, you don't have to keep going back to company, but I can't be expensive with that, that sort of thing.
That brings, that brings me to a question. Are we gonna be properly cleaning these things instead of letting them?
No, we're just gonna buy them, put them in there.
Maintenance will be very important.
He already sent the loudspeaker.
Our maintenance people are gonna have to be trained. They'll be expensive training, but then there's also going to be those.
I mean.
I think those objective quality controls that they're going to mandate will have us, and we're gonna mandate out them.
He's gonna ask an actual question.
Now, let me clarify something here. There's another board member that we went and reviewed work at Charleston High School. And I had to, I personally got up and took the filter and shook it out because it was dirty. So it wasn't being looked at properly. So I did make a comment to the superintendent at that time, definitely wanted to make sure this is done because this is good for kids. So being in that situation some years back, I know that some things are missing. We're paying a lot of money out, we need to make sure it's done and done properly. Thank you.
Amen.
I thought.
I think, I think you, Dr. Shane, I think you just got a lot of material to go check them all.
I have some questions. On the energy savings, I read through it, I think I understand what was going wrong with it, but I just didn't, I think some other board members may have just probably misunderstood this too. Whenever we talk about energy savings, if I'm looking at my energy bill, I'm gonna look at over, maybe over the course of the year we do the energy, I use electricity. I'll say, okay, this year I paid twelve hun- twelve, uh, twelve hundred dollars for my energy. And then I'm gonna bring in a company, I'm gonna do some work, and then the next year I'm gonna look at it and I'm gonna say, my energy bill now is down to a thousand dollars. Is that the way this works? Are we gonna be looking at our bills or are we, or certain other method of process?
Yeah, we'll be looking at our bills, and then they'll also be looking at the cost of the energy to also, you know, bring in that second. What would we have been paying had we not made those upgrades? But that, that real dollar amount is true for that ten million.
Do we do that each year for the next fifteen years? No, we don't. No, we don't. I don't think you read the contract.
If we had for fifteen years, if we're.
I'm sorry to have to be so blunt about it, but.
Well, what we.
You guys are the experts, and do we have a specification of what we're buying?
The specification we have, what I received is the list of vendors that are gonna be coming through, and they're going to be holding to that.
Okay, do we know what they're providing us? In other words, do we know the lights are coming from Estonia? Are they coming from Slovenia?
I'm not aware where the lights are coming from.
Our specification would have told us that, and that would have come in. And what kind of warranty do we have on our new lights? One year?
Well, typically what you get is a manufacturer's warranty.
Right, and what is that manufacturer's warranty?
I can't answer that question today before.
I, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this contract simply because we don't know what we're getting into.
So, Mr. Hawkins, you just seconded this, this motion, right?
It doesn't mean that I.
Okay, all right.
I did second it.
Okay.
I wanted to get it up here so we could talk.
All right. Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I've got about fifty other things, but I'm gonna go through the board.
Okay, well, I would like to make a comment, and that is that this is probably one of a couple of items since I've been on the board that we've gone through and gone through and gone through. And I, by the time we finished all this, and I was on the committee, was very impressed with E S G because they were able to answer all of our questions. We took a contract from them. It was run through, correct or incorrect, other places. We sat out and had a meeting about that where they answered questions. They were willing to negotiate terms of that contract. April's probably gone through that contract once or twice, or five times. And, you know, I, I think, I don't know, I, I'm just, I feel like we have probably wrecked them over the coals more than any other company or wrecked that contract over the, the coals more than any other contract that I've seen in the last couple of years. So I have no, I have no problems with it. I know that I'm never going to understand one hundred percent everything they're doing because I don't understand what, what they spend their life doing. I mean, I think they've explained it to me in a way that I feel very comfortable with. I know that as a school system, we need to generate savings, and this is one way we can do it. I was almost more impressed with the air quality part than the lighting part, only I guess because of COVID and what that's, you know, right into everybody's lives.
There's a whole, there's a whole slew of all of the buildings, virtually all the buildings will, will get a touch, some heavier than others. As we continue to delve into the facility study and we delve into the demographic study, then we'll be able to take a look at maybe, you know, the, a lot of amount of money that we were looking at spending at one building or another may or may not come to fruition. We'll have that ability within this contract, but I think you're, you're right in such that this is a partnership that we're entering into. It's phase one. There's not been anything discussed phase two or phase three other than when we initially started talking to the E S G six months, nine months ago, we knew that there was a whole scope of work on the HVAC MEP route, some twenty-five million dollars plus. What we have here is nine million dollars of that, and I think they're only going to be as good as honoring this contract and doing the work and making sure that the subcontractors meet all of our expectations. If that's the case, and that's a true partnership, then I, then I would anticipate that we continue to look much further down the road, phase two, phase three, as we continue to improve those air quality and lighting upgrades throughout the district.
I have a few things.
I had a couple things. Number one, I really did look forward to working with E S G. I, I know it doesn't sound like it. I think there is a large amount of room for improvements in our, our reduction in our energy use, and I think E S G has the ability to do that. I'm concerned with the way the contracts are written, especially the energy savings clause. There's also some concerns that I have that Ms. Skelbaker might be able to answer. I saw one provision in the contract that appears to be in conflict with state statute, which is the performance bond. Did you catch that?
I don't remember.
The performance bond specifically states in the contract that it's not to be applied to the guaranteed savings. But the state statute specifically states that we are receiving performance bond from the contractor that does exactly that. And it's not written in the contract that way, in fact, to conflict. And I'm concerned about those kinds of issues that I'm seeing in this contract. That's the things I'm concerned with. As to whether E S G can do the work, I'm pretty sure they can do the work. I mean, they've been around a long time, but I'm concerned also about the energy savings because I know it's set on the first year, and then it's set on the second, it's on the first year savings. And then after that, it locks in, and then it's inflated each year either four point five percent or based on the consumer price index, whichever is highest. And I'm concerned with that too, because if the consumer price index drops, then we're continuing to pay a higher, a higher inflation rate against that savings, which concerns me. I don't know that that seems equitable. The second thing is, we're gonna go ahead and sign this contract tonight, which I'm sure it's gonna go through. We're gonna sign the contract, and we're committing to spending one, one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars within thirty days after that. And we're already living, not hand to mouth, but we have some, some concerns with money. So we're gonna commit to that. We have an election coming up. These gentlemen back here will be able to speak better to what the outcome of the election is, but a point six percent increase in the bonds cost that we have to purchase based on what the, what E S G stood for will put us out of that savings. Will eat up that savings that we've got, which also makes the contract invalid, because the contract according to statute has to provide savings. It has to be a net negative, it has to be net zero.
Right, net zero.
So I, I have some concerns that I think have not possibly been gone through properly. And I apologize for not bringing you to everybody right now, but I'm, I'm sorry, it's just in the past, I've seen things where I bring it up, I get a nice talking point, and then I'm not really able to have time to be able to correct it, so I wanted to make sure that this guy out.
Well, and if I may add, you know, I think this will be a very positive thing for our district to, to move into in terms of energy savings, especially the needs that our operational fund has. I do want to make sure the rest of the board understands what has been done in terms of looking at this contract. I mean, we, we've spent numerous hours looking at this contract in terms of the members on the committee, April, Chad, Todd. I also want to remind Mr. Hawkins and also inform the rest of the board, we actually, there was actually another attorney from outside the district that didn't look at the contract. And I believe, you know, their statement was that this is a solid contract.
He said it was a decent contract. So some of the things, some of the clauses on that were here. And as Ms. Skelbaker pointed out, he was, he's not from Indiana, he does license saving, so he's not familiar with some of the things that they, the attorney would do. I brought the attorney. I'm sorry.
You know, so I, I mean, I feel like it's been vetted very well, you know, in, in terms of what we've done and went through it, you know, and feel good about where we're going with E S G in the contract and the energy savings that we'll get from this, which will be very helpful to our operational fund. I mean, we're, we're currently spending around two point six million dollars a year in utility costs. And we need to, we need to start biting into that quickly.
Don't doubt that.
Let me ask, let me ask a question for the attorney, our, really superintendent. If we approve this as well as we can approve it, to check on this performance bond, even if performance bond doesn't run out for ten years, usually for a short period of time when you can just hear the money back on some situation, I don't know what it's like we're starting here. I'm not too much concerned about what kind of bulbs are used because the fact is that they're trying to save us money, so they're, they're going to be providing that they get more costly. But it brings a lot, you know, I guess the thing that I look at is that we need to make sure that the performance bond is not legally required by statute. If it is, then we need to make sure they understand they have to put that in.
I'll definitely look at it, and you're right. When we have, as it stated in here, when we have our acceptance, final acceptance of the work that's been provided, then that performance bond, you know, essentially has expired, but.
Does that also end the guarantee of the savings?
No.
Well, that's what I was hoping, that it might. But whenever I asked Jacob about that, he did say it did. That was the initial presentation. I asked him, I said, if we don't continue the contract, once we end the contract, does that end our savings? And he said it did.
I think that's right.
Yes.
And then we're not guaranteed at that point. Now, in my opinion, the way it's, the way it's structured, you're gonna get that money because it's a critical structure.
Right.
You can't not get that money. But what I, what I think we also need to understand is, if we do something different for instance, like my dad, if I have a light bulb, and I have a fixture in the kitchen, and it costs me fifty dollars a year to operate it, and then I put new bulbs in it, and that goes down to twenty-five, but then I add ten more of those fixtures, then my savings changes. In fact, it may not be savings anymore because I've done something different. We're gonna be doing a few things differently, you know, based on COVID, so we need to, we need to keep in mind that the one plus, one plus billion dollars that we're gonna be saving on this, we have to be very, very careful when we do. The other way. We have the lights we saw at three schools. They, they talked about reduction of fixtures. And. And they showed the scope here too. And showed before and after photographs, and they, they looked really good, they looked a lot more eliminated. The reason why, the reason why we had Schmidt come out to do that, the document, the document commission, their specification listed a, a, a performance specification. You have to meet certain criteria, and then they demanded a five-year warranty on fixtures and bulbs, driver, driver's bulbs and fixtures. And if we don't have that, that's, that's concerns to me where we don't see that. I'd see a little bit longer than one-year warranty. The one-year warranty is a state, state sanction, and they, they give us that, no doubt of that. But we can also ask for longer warranties. We asked for longer warranties on our training, the last ten, fifteen years or something. And we get it, and the lighting industry can do that too, and they do. I just, that's why we don't know what we got. We don't, we don't know what we're getting right now.
Well, and I'll say, I mean, I, I believe E S G has a very vested interest in making sure they do a very good job for us. You know, if they want to continue to work with us, you know, in phase two, phase three, as we go forward, because we have a lot of needs, as you said, in terms of the utility expenses that we have, and a lot of things that need to be taken care of, you know. If, if they don't do a good job for us in this phase one, then we'll look in a different direction. I believe they're gonna do a good job for us, but.
I, I wanna believe it too. I really do. I don't sound like it, but I really do, because if we do, as you point out, we're gonna be doing the new work that, uh, several, for Utica and for these other buildings, they can bring into that mix the proper design that perhaps, you know, architecture firms aren't gonna pick up on. And it's, it's possible for a very good thing, but I'm looking through the contract, I see a set of questions, serious questions. And that's why I, I wanna hold their feet in fire. And I want them to know that as, as long as I'm on board, it's, it's gonna be done.
And we, we do too. I mean, we, we want to make sure we get the, the energy savings that they're stating and make sure that things go well. Hopefully, we're back here in a year, you know, talking about doing a phase two and saving more money.
I, I pressed you to have them do the evaluation for the next phases to.
Yep.
I want to see it, I want, you really do want to see this work.
Yeah, that's one consideration. I mean, all the board members sitting here need to understand that, you know, we, the board has already approved two different project development agreements with E S G. If, if we don't move forward with this contract, we owe E S G, I believe, right at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that's, but out of that, out of that, we will also get their, their evaluation. And I looked through their evaluation, it started through, and I believe it's fairly accurate.
You have questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the E S G guaranteed energy savings contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And we have propane school bus purchased through C I E S C bus bid process.
Yes, Madam President. So what we have, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, was the acceptance of the phase two Volkswagen Indiana litigation through I D M. We received two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in that second wave of funding. That is a seventy-five, twenty-five matching grant. And the way that the grant was written was that we would be trading in essentially destroying eight diesel engine buses for the purchase of eight propane engine buses. So what you have before you is, we use the Center on the Education Services Center to do bus bids. We spec those bus bids out, and we put those out into that system. It's an online system that the Center on the Education Service Center handles for us based on the specs that we, we desire. Those specs were approved by the board of the. Those specs were approved by the board at the previous meeting. And based on that, I now recommend that we enter into a purchase of those buses, which we won't. Those buses have to be built and they're not on an assembly line, so they're built by hand. We will not receive those probably until in March, until late March of 2021. But we do anticipate giving them a purchase order for $857,304, again, of which we do have $224,690 coming by way of the IDM grant. So I'm asking respectfully that you approve the purchase of those propane buses through the Central, Central Indiana Educational Service Center bus bid process.
Thank you. Board, can you have a motion, please?
Madam President, I approve the propane, purchase of eight propane 70 passenger school buses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. These are being, those are air brakes, right?
No, they're hydraulic brakes.
And is that, is that, um?
McAllister.
Okay. Somewhere, I was thinking that was a core, I don't think, no way, okay. I'm listening.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just going to say congratulations again on this grant.
Thank you. As long as there's money available, then we'll continue to try and go after it.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you for the work you did on this state, thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
I have another question, Chad, you know, I've been waiting a little while. A 70 passenger bus does not require air brakes anymore?
You can, you can specify air or hydraulic. The last buses we bought with phase one were diesel for diesel. We did have air brake, but we had a mixture of bus drivers that have an air brake restriction, so we tried to, to keep that as about a 50/50 in our fleet.
So probably it improves ultimately, because I know 76, and after that, you'd have to get air brakes, since we know it's looking at that 70 passenger bus.
It's all about the chassis, and how much stress is being put on those brakes.
I thought you were talking about in the year 76.
I didn't guess that one.
I know, commercial, commercial trucks, and whatnot, you have to be specially certified, specially licensed under the floor air brakes, is that correct?
That's right, you have an air brake restriction if you don't take that portion.
Okay, so you say an air brake restriction, that means that you can have a commercial license, but you can't drive?
That's exactly right, yes sir. And we have about, like I said, we have about 50, because it used to be that you didn't have to have that, and then when they started making that air brake test, some chose not to, you didn't have to, but it didn't take the air brake test as part of that CDL training, and you had an air brake restriction. So you can only drive hydraulic brake bus.
If we, assuming we, assuming that you're correct, I believe you are, then this enables us to be more flexible with our, with your, with our.
Exactly, every person can drive a hydraulic brake bus, not every person can drive an air brake bus.
And your CDL just, is just hydraulic.
Thank you.
If you want to go through air brakes and glass layer and all that stuff, it's different.
Yeah, it's different.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I just assume there are people who did not like, you know, I have like, can't drive at night without contact restrictions. I just felt something, I didn't realize.
Yeah, I was, I was misinterpreting what you said.
Yeah.
We always had this air brakes, Big Red was air brakes when we had hydraulic, so if you want to drive Big Red or Phil Phillips, you have to have air brake endorsement on your license.
Interesting. And unfortunately, anyone who would like to have that air brake restriction lifted off of their license, they won't let you just take that portion of the test. You have to go through the whole process again. A lot of people just say it's not worth it. As long as we've got hydraulic buses in the fleet, they're probably not going to have that process done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. All those in favor of approving the propane school bus purchase through the CIESC bus bid process, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? What, and then I approve.
Thank you, Board, good evening.
Thank you. We now have public comments on non-agenda items. We have one person who is wanting to speak, Dawn Justice. And, excuse me, Dawn, when you come forward, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. You will have three minutes, and Renee here will let you know when you have one. Her clock broke, thank God.
I got you, bro.
We will let you know when you have one minute left.
And they did the turn in the copies.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Wait a minute, I got to get my clock. Timer. What, have you given her 20 minutes?
No.
Not against you.
12, I'll, I'll order one minute or 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds, oh, yes. All right, are you ready?
My name is Dawn Justice, and I live at 502 Tristan Trail, Jeffersonville, Indiana. The GCCS Music Coalition was created to ensure that every student in the district has access to high-quality music education. As you are aware, last fall, the related arts programs were discussed and major changes were on the horizon. On behalf of the Music Coalition, I'd like to thank the board members and the administration for their hard work in finding the best solutions for our students. In fact, we already know of at least one new hire this year where a music position was filled at an elementary school in our district with a certified music teacher. There are students that right now are receiving the benefits of your hard work and commitment to ensuring that music is a part of every GCCS student's education. However, in our current structure, GCCS is far from offering equal access to music education for all students in all grades. While a solution has been found to one particular problem, that problem was a symptom of a larger issue. GCCS currently has no long-term plan, vision, method of collaboration, coordination, or strategy for music education in our schools. To that end, once again, the members of the GCCS Music Coalition urge the school board to establish a task force. This task force would help establish long-term plans and vision for the sustainability of music education that our community values within our schools. The exposure to music performance and education in our district is vital for the enrichment of a well-balanced educational experience. As it currently stands, students of minimal economic means are left out of our music programs due to financial and other barriers. As music performance is proven to impact these students' academic behavior and long-term life outcomes more than any other populations, it is imperative that a long-term strategic effort is made to ensure that every GCCS student is provided with a well-coordinated music performance education. In addition, many of the members of the Music Coalition have witnesses, have witnessed instances in which music programs are left out of the decision-making process that directly affects the success for their student. Performing arts should have a seat at the table when decisions are being made that affect these programs. The effort to properly plan and create an environment in which all stakeholders are focused on moving forward as well as saving future costs due to lack of planning. Board members and administrators, take the time to please listen to your music performance teachers. Many of them are leaders and innovators in their field. They have sensible and visionary solutions that benefit our students as well as create a better GCCS district. Please reach out, contact them, and see what they have to say. We ask the members of the board and the administration to please hear our message of collaboration, vision, and hope for the future. On behalf of the Coalition, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I am looking forward to the development of the task force and the great opportunities that our students will have because of it.
Thank you very much.
At 30, she told me that too, because.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we come to board comments. Ms. Gilkey?
The only comment I have at this time is to follow up with Ms. Justice about a task force and being more inclusive with our arts staff.
Well, we have discussed it internally, in terms of, you know, what that looks like looking at the curriculum. You know, and we're not opposed to creating something like that, or we can get together and discuss, you know, ideas moving forward. You know, when we talked about the related arts programming, you know, last year, more in the, from the standpoint of, you know, budget cuts and that type of thing because of, of our budget. You know, this was generated out of that, you know, and it's certainly something we're willing to look at as a candidate, you know, you know, what sets the goals and what we want to get from that task force.
So we will follow up with this.
Yeah, we, we, either myself, or Melissa Bauer, or Karen Wesley will.
Thank you.
Can, Ms.? I'm sorry.
It's not your turn. You're just going to break time.
I just want to ask you, Ms. Justice, if we join the Music Coalition on Facebook, will there be information on there of how to participate in that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thank you. Sorry about that.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I'm just talking my own way. Along the same lines, Ms. Gilkey asking, I know we had a lot of conversations last year about the elementary music program, and there was supposed to be a, a schedule designed so that you could see the students got a same number of minutes. There was some equity there, because it was a mess, as far as it had gotten way out of whack. Have we done that, and I haven't asked, because you've had a little bit on your plate. And I just wondered where we are on that. And I know with scheduling or changing of schedules, that was probably the last thing on your mind, but.
Well, I will say that Karen Wesley has met with the leader of each related arts content area or subject area, yeah, and tried to lay that out, and also worked with the elementary principals in trying to make the time more equitable, you know, and also getting consistency across our elementary. So now, COVID and what has happened with, with, with COVID, you know, pushed us back a little bit on where we wanted to be, but she has started that process, working with principals.
Well, I'll check again when everything's good.
Yeah. Hopefully soon.
There'll be.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Hawkins? You want to say that?
But he already took his time.
Oh, he already took his time. Mr. Hawkins?
No, thank you all.
Dr. Clayton, oh, he's not there, okay.
Dang, almost.
Who put the, who put the lights on her?
That was Mrs. Patrick.
I was asking for it, if you could.
Dr. Clayton, you have any comments?
Yes, I'd like to say this, in talking with Mark on many occasions, I'm not the only one hearing someone else's older than I am, but anyway. You know, sometimes we make a comment about what was done in the past or procedural things. If I can be of my age, one to look forward, then we all need to look forward on planning things for our school system and not rely on the old way. The old way has its day, it's a new day, new people. So I ask that you express your ideas and not rely on the old way, which may seem safe. Let's be, let's think out of the box, let's be creative. Let's do things to unite the community, to the schools, that we can progress faster, right? It's all I can say, done.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton.
So, right now, I'm joining your Facebook page. Join, that's moving forward. Ms. Justice, I just want to thank you for speaking, and I have heard them talk about it, and I was in music and both being in choir, and, you know, Ms. Wesley knows too, very near my heart. I appreciate everybody who came out, it's really good to see you. That's all.
Well, I'm sorry, I saved my time until now.
I would like to.
I would like to share a story. Saturday, I was at Buck City, of course I was, and, we're the 14 now. And I was checking out, and I had a Nerdy Matt shirt on that said "Social," it had a distance formula. Oh, so, anyway, he got me in the way dummy, and like, they said, "We're trying to figure out your shirt." And I said to him, I said, "Oh, no, you don't understand," and I said, "Where'd you go to school?" And he said Floyd Central, and I said, "Oh, good, and glad it was Greater Clark," because I taught there and I'm on board there. And when I said Greater Clark, he said, "Oh, my gosh, I met the most awesome lady," not you, Katie. He said, "I, before I worked here, I worked at a hotel, and this lady was there, and she was just coming to be your new CFO." And we got, we got to know her, and we talked to her, and she was just so awesome. And she, you could tell how much she wanted to help kids and how much she liked to do things for kids, and so, don't cry at a board meeting, or they'll call you Mark Hoffman forever. I just want to say that what we do, I know this admin team works 14 hours a day, probably more. What we do in these rooms is important, but that, all I had to say was Greater Clark, and that was his experience, and that's who he met. And, you know, that's what we have going for us when we're out in the community, people are paying attention to who we are and where we come from. And so I just want to thank you, Laura, for, you know, that was just a random off-the-cuff experience. And so we have so much going for us right now as a team. And, you know, I like what you said, Dr. Clayton, we just need to move forward from there, because we've got a lot going, of course, we got, we have momentum. So, thank you so much.
Amen.
I'll really give her a hand, because. The thing we can do is make a positive impression on our kids, and so just for you, for him to remember you, having done that is, is awesome. Amazing, and thank you.
Justin, look at you.
You just got here, and you're already making great impressions on our kids.
I've always said, how do you want the story, and they've heard it all today, today was the perfect day. How do you want the story to go? It's in your hands. And I've always tried to demonstrate that, I did want to be good for Greater Clark County and these kids. I mean, I'm all in, and I think we can do it. When we move together as a unit, all together, we will take you places that you've never dreamed, and that's what our kids need to know. We plan to take them places that they've never dreamed of before.
Well, thank you.
Well, and I certainly appreciate Laura and her ability, she has fit right in with the team and has been a welcome addition to Greater Clark, so she's been really good to work with. So I want to make one clarifying comment that I didn't add on the calendar discussion, because one question that comes up is, well, what are we doing with inclement weather, snow days, stuff like that? Those would be learning days, asynchronous, so if we ever have snow or ice, we're going to cancel school, that would be, hopefully we don't.
No, I was so much earlier, I was so sick of no snow.
Those would be learning days, so. And, and just want to reiterate, you know, the, the news of the assessed value increase is great news for us from the standpoint of, you know, our, our goal strategically is to try to set that tax rate at $10. You know, and when the assessed value goes up, that gives us more room, you know, to improve our facilities without impacting the taxpayer negatively. So, you know, the more that assessed value goes up, that's a, that's a positive thing for us, you know. I do realize there's probably some people out there saying, "You should just let the tax rate go down." My argument as your superintendent, as somebody that lives in this community, is that we have a lot of buildings in this district that need to be improved. You know, and we need to take care of that, and we need to take care of our kids, you know, and make sure they have good schools to go to that look nice and, you know, and have good quality learning environments, so, thank you all.
Mark, I don't know, I don't know if you saw it today, I guess some of you got it, it's the Jeffersonville. Yeah, oh, there's, in the corner, there's what's coming, and I counted it up, I'm not talking about that new development that's right there at the corner by the Big Four Bridge, but besides that, there's, in, in the city of Jeffersonville, there are 257 new starts besides that.
there are 257 new starts besides that, and, I mean, you know, it just keeps growing, and as it grows, our population grows, and we get stronger.
Well, and I will tell you, you know, our next board meeting, Jerry McKibben, who's doing our demographic study, will do his presentation, so we'll, we'll learn a lot on November 10th in terms of what he thinks is going to happen in our district over the next 10 years.
You know, we need to give the mayor a pat on the back because in the brochure, you know, they even liken it to, you should sell Little Road, and we got a plug in there with school, parking square, so...
That's my question, I was gonna give on that, on that board discussion.
Where's your school signs at, Laura? What? Aren't you on that one? Our school signs, the signs, the schools, the student committee, the roadworks and stuff?
No.
Oh, it was last time.
Renee?
Yeah.
Renee, she says Paul Burwood. On the side is adjournment, may I have a motion, please?
I'd like to be adjourned.
All those in favor?
Dr. Plankton?
All those in favor of adjournments? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? You guys have it.